Proper notification was done for the meeting. Thank you Kate and Laura. And with that, we are going to roll right into the superintendent's report equity and funding of was not at schools. Turn it over to Lauren Chatley at this point Jeff.
Right. So Jeff Humphries is joining us here tonight. He's gonna speak on equity and funding. You've heard it from me a few times, a number of times, actually. It's about revenue limits and disparities and differences in revenue limits. We are a fairly low revenue district where we get 10,500 hours per student to work with, while some other districts get 15,000, 12,000, 11,000. And I've got some comparisons that I can that I can share with you maybe toward the end of the presentation, but I've got our Waukesha County comparables with Arrowhead and also the Union High School Districts across the state. There's 10 of them across the state and you'll see that Arrowhead is funded in terms of revenue limit, the lowest of all 10. You know, the Union High School Districts, then Waukesha County will third from the bottom of Waukesha County in terms of revenue limit pupil. John's gonna explain that this all started back in 1993 and I won't take your show away today.
Okay, sounds good. And are you gonna advance the slides for me?
I can do that or I can give you up this either way. Oh, I can do that too.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is John Humphries. I'm the executive director for the Wisconsin Association for Equity and Funding. Thanks for coming out and thanks for all of your work as board members. And thank you Lynn very much for coordinating all of this. It's so nice to be with you and it was fun to make your acquaintance at the school boards conference. Our, our main teaching tool is that we have a giant map like you have in front of you. It's about eight feet tall. People come up and they say, oh, where's, where's my revenue limit and where are my neighbors? And it's very interesting and a great way to introduce the topic. Want to talk a little bit about where we're at now, both in terms of revenue limits and the budget cycle because we're right at the cusp of a two-year budget cycle for the state of Wisconsin. And by the end of June, we should have a new state budget. So I spent the day at the Capitol today, actually, working on some other issues, but I'll be back tomorrow and meeting with more legislators about the budget. And then I want to talk about the impacts of revenue limits. We all know obviously money matters, but it matters in some ways that are maybe a little surprising. So we'll talk about that. And then some proposals for revenue limit changes and what's coming in the future. So our, our organization is not huge. It's about 16 school districts and only about $50,000 a year in revenue for the organization. So it's not a big, we don't give, you know, we don't write checks to legislators or anything like that. We have a handful of individual members, including Lynn. Thank you for joining just the other day. Membership fees are really quite low and the whole idea is to spend as much time as we can educating both the public and legislators about revenue limits. And we have a handful of large district members you can see there. Go ahead. Yeah, thanks. The, so the constitution is interesting. It, it actually lays out the equality of school systems in very clear language. The legislature shall provide by law for the establishment districts of schools which will be as nearly uniform as practical. Our contention is that that gives great standing to the fact that our system is not nearly as uniform as it could be. And so we rely on that when I, especially when I talk to legislators, I say, you know, that this is, we think it's an unconstitutional system. And so let's talk about that. The, the overall school funding system is quite complicated and Jeff and a lot of people around the state spend a lot of time understanding it and working with it. But there is one piece that is very, very simple and that's your revenue limit. That's the dollar amount you get per student. And it, it, it's it's what you can get from both local property taxes and what you get in state, what's called equalization aid, state aid. But, so you've got the map and I've got more copies of the map for board members. I know you've got it on your screens too. You can see a lot of diversity there. It's interesting. I have some vacation property up in the very top where those blue districts are. There's a district up there that gets over $19,000 per pupil. Happen on the left, right on the Mississippi River gets about 15,000. At the tip of Door County there, that district gets over $20,000 per student. So it's, it's odd, like people see that and they say, wait a minute, why is this? How did this happen? And why could it be so different? And you can see the revenue limits in this area. A Quantico is low, Milton is low, Watertown. And on the next slide, Jeff, you can see your revenue limits. These are base revenues, no exemptions for every school district in the Arrowhead area. So you're all, you're all kind of on the low side. The average was, I believe, 11, 11, 8, 11, 4. Okay, somewhere in there. So there's Lake Country is right at about that level, but nobody's really killing it here in terms of revenue limits per pupil. So it's, it's interesting to see that your many of your districts are at the low end. Now, let's see. Yeah, Merton, I saw a Merton name tag here. You're at the, you're at the minimum 10,000 per pupil. So you would have probably the strongest argument to say, no, let's equalize the system. AEF, by the way, does not advocate for taking money away from districts that have been at the top. And instead, what we advocate is lifting a rising tide lifting all boats. So we'll talk more about that. So the spending caps were enacted in 1993, 30 years ago, and it was set based on what the districts were spending that year. So nobody knew it was coming. There was nothing much you could do about it. And some districts were adding new facilities or outfitting facilities that had already built or buying curriculum or whatever they were doing. The ones that are at 15, 18, and 20,000 lucked out because they were doing something big and they were spending a lot of money per pupil. And that set the baseline. That was your year. And if you were a high spending district that year and you've been in the, in the money for 30 years. The state average at that time was 5,800 per student. 24 districts were substantially higher. The lowest in the state was Waterford, southwest Milwaukee. And the highest was Nicolay High School. So, so I went back and I wanted to see what the governor had said. This is Governor Thompson. What did he actually say at the bill signing? And this is so 1993, and this is the school board's newsletter at the time. And I dug through the old school board newsletters and it specifically says, the limits are in place for five years. Okay, so they passed this with the expectation that it would not be a longstanding difference in revenues. And they promised to look at the equity question. And if you go to the next one, AEF is created and it was right away, they said, you know, this is, this revenue limit system has to be challenged. And they actually said that legal action should be pursued and they did, in fact, go all the way to the Supreme Court in Wisconsin. And they lost. We lost, obviously, as part of that pursuit. But the legislature said at that time, the, the system was not yet inequitable enough. So we've looked at those inequities and how they've carried forward. And our contention is that not only is it unconstitutional, but that those, those differences have gotten so bad now that it represents a new opportunity to go to court if the legislature doesn't take pains to make the system more equitable. And by the way, you can ask questions and I don't, I've done this like 50 times or more. And so we're happy to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
Who, who took the, the case to the Supreme Court back 30 years ago with that you folks?
Who brought the suit? Who brought this? It was AEF, the Associate to Market Funding. And it was a suit called Vincent versus Boyd. And I believe it was Jack Vincent was the guy's name. He was the superintendent in a little district up in northwestern Wisconsin. And he got to be the one and Boyd was the secretary of the Department of Revenue at the state. So he was the, it was a class action suit.
Would you consider, are you, is your organization considering doing this again?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we have, and I'll talk a little bit more about this. We are considering it. We've actually hired counsel. He sits on the Middleton Cross Plains School Board. And we have engaged with them, with that firm. We have prepared expert witnesses. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that expert witness, the one in particular, has discovered and share more about that. Jeff, can you bring up the PowerPoint now? There was a PowerPoint presentation that I sent you. And so what I did, this is, that chart shows each school district's revenue limit and the height of the chart is the number of school districts at that given revenue limit. So I created a chart like that for every year over the past 30 years. And then I animated it. So if you play the slideshow, what you're gonna get is one second for every year over the past 30 years. You'll see they start to cluster. Okay, now I'm just gonna have to go back. I think it's the third to last slide is where we're at. Yeah. So there are about 125 school districts. Whoop. Sorry, if you can just freeze on the, on the third to last slide. Don't, there you go. Good. So 125 districts at the, or 124 at the $10,000 per student level. And you can see there are, that means there are about 300 districts that are above that. Our position is that there's no good reason why one district should get a lot more money per pupil than any other. Nevertheless, we know that there are student level differences and there is a discussion going on at the state level about having the dollar amount be based on the students' needs. So if the student has a disability, or if they're an English learner, or if they're a student from a low income home, that you'd get additional funding for that student. But there wouldn't be wild differences on the order of, of 100% higher funding in one district than another. So we'd rather see the per pupil amount, one bar, everybody gets the same amount per pupil and then have differences based on the student needs. Go ahead, one more. So our proposal right there is to add 1,500 to the low revenue ceiling. So it'll go from 10,000 to 11,005, which would affect every one of your member districts in the Indian High School area. Over 93% of school districts would be within 10%. So if you take that 11, 5, 10, 10%, that's $1,500. So 93% of school districts would be 13,000 or less. So this has been well received by legislators and I can talk a little bit more about that later on. And we can switch back to the Google slideshow now. So that's the direction we hope to be going. The other thing that I have had good luck sharing with legislators about is the fact that it's about the money, but that money makes a difference for kids, right? It really makes a difference in student experience. And I thought it was so interesting, your robot club talking about more funding per pupil. And they said some schools are giving over $2,000 per pupil. Well, the, a good question to ask would be, what's their revenue limit, right? How do they, how can they afford 2,000? I mean, that's like 20% of your funding per pupil on a, on an extracurricular activity was a super thing, but you know, some districts can afford 2,000 per pupil because they get 20,000. So a few years ago, we worked with RW Bear, the financial services company, and the LaFollette School at UW Madison to create dashboards for revenue limits and school funding. So the next slide shows 75% of your revenues are under the revenue limit. And the big slice of the pie chart is local property tax. And so the, the interesting part of Wisconsin's funding is that that's called equalization. In a school district where they have less property value per pupil, you might see that ratio be very different. You're still under that $10,000 cap, but in a low revenue or a low income school district, they might get a lot more aid from the state versus local property taxpayers. Nevertheless, you're under the $10,000 cap here in Arrowhead, 10, 5. Go ahead. Here it's your revenue limit as compared to the state average for the last 30 years. And you were right at about the state average and very close to it after 2011. It dropped down and you, you were close to it and you were a little below. And then you've caught up here in the last year or two. And I didn't, I didn't update the numbers since we did the dashboards. Go ahead. Yeah.
Question for the audience. Anyone know how we jumped up there from 1920 to 2021? We were falling below the line, right? We started to in, in 2016 or 17, started to fall below the line. What happened?
What happened in 2019, 2020 to bring that revenue, revenue limit up? I don't know.
22,000 votes were faster by 60. And it was just to replace a debt payment that was falling off the books.
Oh.
And so now we don't have any debt. We used that 1.7 million to take care of some facility needs. And it looks like we have a big boost in our revenue limit, but it didn't help us on operations at all.
Right, right. So it's, it's interesting that the question AEF asks for situations like that is, why should your local taxpayers have to make up that difference through referendum when you're not getting state aid that would fund a substantial portion? So those state tax dollars are going to those school districts that are getting 15 and 20,000 dollars per pupil. Questions out here?
That's something I often have to repeat. The difference between state aid and revenue limit. Revenue limit is what we're allowed to operate with. That's a revenue we can, we can work with, what we can pair bills with. State aid just says the state will kick in this much of that operating money and the local property tax will pick up the rest. State aid doesn't allow you to spend more when you get more of state aid. In fact, the legislature put a bunch of money into state aid on the last biennial. But it didn't do anything for schools in terms of what they could operate with. It did reduce property taxes.
Thank you.
Relative to that, can I ask a question? You showed the map earlier of the government. Do you have a similar map that shows state aid?
Yes.
By, by, like in, in the same format so we can see, all right, the, the school, it has that 19,000 revenue limits. What percentage is there still?
Yeah, well, typically, so what was interesting is that in that 1992 benchmark year, higher income districts were typically spending more money. And in those years, it was your school district revenues were based on local property taxes and the school board just set the levy and those were your revenues. So there is a correlation there. I believe the DPI publishes a map about the sort of proportion, the aid proportion of your total levy. So I can, I can try to get that to you. You've probably seen those.
And it's important to remember that aid is distributed based on property wealth. So the higher value your property is per student, the less aid you get. So if your property value goes up one year, and in that same year, your student count goes down, do you have more property value per student or less? You have more property value per student, which makes you look richer in the aid form, but you get less aid. And so your property taxes will go up. That's what we're gonna look at next year.
Yeah, it, it is a complicated system, but remember that revenue limit is your key number. That 10, 5 per pupil for the Union High School District is your key number per student. So your spending in 1920 was about 11, 4 per pupil, this about 500 bucks per student, less than the state average. And of course, that's because you had fewer revenues. You just, money's not there unless you pass a referendum.
The good thing our performance is that that's gonna save everything.
So that's the current status. We looked at that. And on the next slide. So in order to pursue the lawsuit, we engaged a, an economist to look at revenue limits and he works with schools and states all over the nation to analyze the impact of school funding systems on student outcomes. He's at the University of California, Dr. Rothstein, and he did an analysis of revenue limits and the impact of revenue limits on student outcomes and a variety of other things. I'm gonna ask you to skip forward a few slides here, Jeff, and keep going. This is, yeah, keep going. I, you can come back and certainly look at those. Here are his conclusions right there. First of all, revenue limits, if you were a low revenue school district in 1992, you probably still are. Merton was probably at the bottom back in those years and you can't break out of it. It's just, it's not possible without a referendum. They're closely tied to spending, obviously. They're somewhat loosely tied to family income. And that goes back to the question earlier about how they got established. There's very little or even in some cases, a negative correlation between revenue limits and state test scores. And our, our sort of theory on that is that test scores are so highly impacted by a wide variety of factors, right? Here you've got a low revenue limit, but obviously super engaged parents, right? So you've got great academic outcomes. There are a lot of variables that go into student achievement. So we didn't, I guess, with regard to the lawsuit, we didn't have our sort of proverbial smoking gun. We couldn't say revenue limit, low revenue limits equal low achievement, therefore we will sue. But we did do some other analyses and we'll skip to the, to these. We did some work with a financial services firm that has sponsored us called New Natrics. And we use some of their data analysis to look at low revenue districts that are 10,000 or below and then high revenue districts we defined as 11,000. So we looked at student teacher ratios and overall in the teacher category, low revenue districts have more students per teacher. In other words, a worse ratio. Higher class sizes. If you look at the school districts with the best ratios, the lower rate, low revenue districts are just about 9% and the high revenue districts are almost 20%. Go ahead. If you look at overall ratios of, if you look at, at schools with the, the hot, most favorable ratios, high revenue districts, or rather the least favorable ratios, high revenue districts are less than half of that total. So students in low revenue districts are more likely to have higher class sizes. We looked at it at the elementary level. High revenue districts spend about 600 bucks more per student. And per elementary student. And on the next one, when you look at the districts that are spending 3,000 or more per elementary student, it's much more common to see a high revenue district in that group as well. We looked at middle and high schools spending and saw significant differences there as well and the same kinds of analysis. Next one. And of those districts that spend quite a bit on per pupil, again, low revenue districts, much less common in that group. So just summarizing, less favorable student teacher ratios, lower spending on middle and high and elementary teachers. We also looked at counselors, nurses and library media specialists. It was very intentional because state law specifically requires school districts to have these positions. And it's, it's an area where that, that we wanted to sort of substantiate the differences. Because if we do go to court, we want to be able to say that the, the revenue limits impact our ability to meet the requirements of state law. So on the next slide, we looked at the ratio of school counselors and you see a significantly more favorable ratio in high revenue districts. More spending per pupil on counselors in high revenue districts. We did an odds analysis and basically it shows you're, you're much more likely to have a favorable ratio that, the, the higher your per pupil revenue. Keep going. We also see significantly 20% higher spending on school nurses. And the next slide sort of reiterates that point. And then finally, we looked at library media specialists. So these are the folks with a master's degree in library media sciences, right? These are our most skilled researchers and facilitators of student learning, especially at advanced learning levels. And you see a real impact there. Significantly higher ratios and spending differences. So in the 125 low revenue school districts, college enrollment is lower. Teacher student ratios are less favorable. There are fewer counselors, nurses and librarians. And the, the point that I've been able to get across to legislators is that every kid across the state should have an equal shot at success, right? They should have class sizes that are more uniform and availability of specialty staff, et cetera. So those are the impacts. What comes next? Our proposals. So you can see where we started in 1992 on the left. And where we are now took some effort. In fact, in the last biennial, or actually not the last budget, four years ago, in the state budget, they raised the low revenue limit by $700. So it went from 9,300 per student to 9,700 per student to 10,000. And they put about $350 million in state aid. So we'll go to the next one.
Question, why did you put $300 in state aid in order to move the revenue?
Yeah, well, so the, the equalization aid offset the additional spending in districts that were highly aided. So a highly aided school district, when their revenue limit went up, didn't have to raise their mill rates, but you probably did. So here's what I was talking about. The, the low revenue limit has stayed at the same level for the past four years. So we felt this was good progress. And now we've got a really significant budget surplus. In my conversations with legislators, they're willing to spend about a billion dollars in new spending for education. So that's good news. And we have been advocating on, on behalf of low revenue districts. So here's the proposal from DPI. They proposed to add $1,000 to every school district's revenue. In other words, if you're getting 19,000, now you get 20. And our contention was that, gosh, that doesn't close gaps much. In fact, doesn't close gaps at all. And you see the, the districts on the right, there are 50 districts get a $190 million and on the, in the, the very far side. This, excuse me, I, I get kind of animated about this. 4,300 kids. Is it, I think it's $19 million. Is that what that says? No, 116, 4,300 kids, 116 million dollars in 20 schools. So there's a lot of money going to those select lucky few who were spending a lot of money 30 years ago. So here's Governor Evers' proposal. He adds $1,000 to the revenue limit, just like DPI, but he takes the bottom up by $200 extra. So it would, it would help some. You can still see the distribution we feel is not adequately equal. So here's the AEF proposal. 354 school districts receiving the same 11,500 per pupil. You can see that's a big bar on the far left side and there are still districts getting more. But in order to achieve this, it also means that there would be some sort of a cost of living increase that would be associated for everybody. Everybody's gotta have, they just need more money for fuel and electricity and health insurance and everything else. So there obviously needs to be some sort of a per pupil increase. So if you compare the proposals, again, currently 125 districts at the bottom, DPI would keep that. The governor would move that to 187. We would have 354. We also have been saying to legislators, if they do increase the revenue limit by that $1,500, the lower of the limit by that $1,500. And they put equalization aid in, that would allow taxpayers, local property taxpayers, to decide whether they want to increase their mill rates. And that we think would be direct democracy, right? They'd have that opportunity. And they don't have to raise their mill rates if they feel like they have adequate funding. Okay. So our goals have been to advance equity. Doing a lot of legislative advocacy, budget advocacy. I testified at all of the budget hearings around the state. And I had sort of, I had examples in each area, like in Waukesha, oh, Waukesha's a low revenue district, 10,000, just like Merton. And we talked about the differences in Waukesha versus my alma mater, Elwood, and looking at class sizes directly. In Eau Claire, I talked about Eau Claire is a low revenue district, but right up the road is a district hitting $14,000 per pupil. Let's talk about those differences. So it, it, it made it very concrete for people who were right there in those school districts. So I want to encourage you to So I want to encourage you to mem- uh, to join both the Arrowhead folks and folks from other school districts, but I'm going to encourage you to wait, because I'm hoping that AEF is out of business, uh, in about a month and a half. And, uh, we're, um, we're hoping that the legislature does a lot to close revenue limit gaps. Uh, I'm hearing at least a thousand dollars on the low revenue limit ceiling. Uh, I also heard a proposal to have, uh, three hundred per pupil for all school districts. And one senator said to me, that proposal will never happen because I'm going to kill it. So there's, there, there's a clear understanding of these differences. And those maps that you've gotten, uh, have been in every key legislator's hands, uh, since March. So that's been good. We had, uh, a couple of kids came with me to the, uh, hearing up in Managua. And little Macy there was just, uh, a, a really great kid, a fifth grader. She said, I'm, I'm a fifth grade student. I want to thank you for your work. Mr. Humphries has told me about how schools that get more money for every student have smaller class sizes. And then she says, I would like that in my school too. Right? Why wouldn't we want that for everybody? Brody talked about his hearing loss. He wears hearing aids, and his school was built in nineteen thirty. Uh, and the heating system was ren- uh, replaced in nineteen eighty-nine. So teachers spent time moving him around the classroom because it kept all the background noise from the fans. Like, where's Brody going to sit? And how can we, you know, maximize Brody's learning? And they're spending thousands of dollars on his hearing aid technology. And he just said, I need that. And my school district in Antico, they're like you, a ten thousand dollar per pupil school district. So the end game, uh, again, we hope that they're going to do at least what they did four years ago. Lifting from the bottom up, uh, any additional funding would be on an equal per student basis. And we've also, uh, been advocating around special education funding. That because special education funding is not adequate to meet the needs, you're taking money from regular education to cover those costs. And we've done some analysis around that as well. But we hope to close our doors, uh, on July one. And so if you, if you send a check now, Lynn, thank you. Uh, we have used that money for advertising. We took out ads in three key legislators' home districts, very positive, like, thank you for your work. Four years ago, you added ten thousand at the bottom. Please do something like that, folks. Call your legislator. And the one thing that I really encourage you to do is go on our website and get those legislative handouts. Uh, so your folks in your neighborhoods and in your communities know about the revenue limit system, and they can reach out to their legislators and say, this needs to be a priority in a budget that has four billion in surplus funds. It's time to close revenue gaps. So, well, thank you. I'm happy to answer more questions and really have appreciated the opportunity. Yes, sir.
John, um, it's curious when people say, don't send me a check.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess, how serious does, do you mean that? Because we actually have an action item in our agenda later this evening to possibly, depending on vote, sending a check.
Yes.
Would you suggest that we read on that?
I would, uh, and, and I'm sorry I didn't cover that with you previously. But, um, at this point, we, in fact, I just got another check last week from a district that was renewing. Um, if we close our doors, we want to end up with zero in our budget. Uh, so what I would encourage you to do is approve for twenty-three, twenty-four, if AEF still exists. All right, yeah, thank you, yeah.
I'm, I'm wondering if there's been any discussion of, uh, state funding indexing to the rate of inflation?
Yeah, great question. Uh, is there, uh, conversation about indexing funding to the rate of inflation? So yes, ma'am, there is. And in fact, um, that had been an expectation in the past. Uh, but that was, I, and I believe it was actually in state law, and they took it out in one of the budget cycles. What was that, probably ten years ago? Maybe it was part of Act Ten?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So it would make sense, and, um, yeah, we just know that the costs are going up. But I think, I don't think that the legislature wants to be bound by anything like that. You know, they don't know how much money they're going to have, and I get it. The other thing that I'm encouraged by is that, uh, one of the senators I met with a few weeks ago asked me to help develop legislation that would keep this level of disparity from happening again. How do we keep from having one school at ten thousand and another at twenty? And so we've been talking about the sort of statistics of that, and how do you, and, and the way to do it? Well, they're going to have to make a decision. You either pull the top down or bring the bottom up, and we don't want to advocate for taking from the top down. It just, it just is not politically very palatable. So if they've got the money, add from the bottom up. Yes, sir.
So you're saying that, um, do you anticipate Evers' budget proposal to be enhanced?
No, um, so the Evers' budget proposal, um, basically, joint finance just started with a, a blank slate. And they, just the other day, voted down almost everything that Evers had put in his budget proposal, except for a couple of things, and they're starting with a whole new thing. So what I've heard with regard to low revenue limits is that they're looking at the thousand dollars. So your revenue limit would go like ten thousand, first, next year it'd be ten-five, and the year after it'd be.
And what you're saying is, you guys can close your doors because you feel like what's going to happen in a group is going to be equitable?
That's exactly it. Yeah, we're hoping that they do enough to make it equitable enough that we can close our doors.
Did you feel that Evers' proposal was equitable?
No, uh, no, we didn't feel it was adequately equitable. And that was the, the one chart I thought showed, it was like the third to last slide. I think it was a hundred and eighty-seven school districts would be at the bottom. And then you'd have another, what was it, two hundred and fifty that are above that. Our, uh, my board is really convinced that that fifteen hundred dollar amount gets us to where we need to be. Along with some increases in special education funding, which I think is the other thing. That was a very strong priority for this legislature. Um, so my guess is there will be some good movement. I don't know that we're going to be able to close the doors. And we will probably continue to advocate, but next budget cycle, we think we can really make. So if they did a thousand now, they'd probably do a thousand more than at the bottom. Hopefully.
This. We're, we're lucky enough to have Jeff, because he explains the same thing extremely well. And you explain it very well.
Thank you.
For us, us to understand. Um, s- s- explain the, the counterpoint in doing this to help me understand why legislators, why senators wouldn't.
Well, that's a great question. And it, when I meet with them, especially when I meet with staffers, because a fair amount of the legislators, in particular on joint finance, are familiar with the system. And they've been, they've been hearing about it now from me pretty actively for a couple of years. Um, the staff members are really quite surprised about it. And I, I think they see it as a legacy. Use the, the, um, the way Governor Thompson characterized it was cost controls. We're putting, we're instituting cost controls. And when they have a pot of money, what happens is if they don't give each school district a similar amount, the ones who are at the top characterize it as being on the losing end of the budget. So I might, I might be getting fifteen thousand per pupil. But if you're only going to give me two hundred more, and you're going to give this district a thousand more, you're creating losers. My rejoinder has been, this state budget cycle, this, these state budgets have been creating losers for thirty years. So don't talk to us about being losers now, because we've been there. That's the life we're living for three decades. So I get a little feisty about that. But yeah, it's, and, and, um, they just get pushed back from higher revenue districts. So, yeah.
Do you know, because of, uh, what our government did in ninety-three, is this a uniquely Wisconsin problem? Do you know of other states that had this issue?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Are there other states with this issue? Um, so when we hired Dr. Rothstein, he was interested to learn more about the Wisconsin system. And I, I believe we're the only state with a revenue limit system like this. And it, so to your question, it, it is, it is ripe for the lawsuit. Um, and, and my board is quite adamant about that. In fact, when I talk to superintendents and business managers and we talk about AEF, they say, when are you going to sue? That's what they want to see. They want this change like now. And so they have a real opportunity. And frankly, if, if that, uh, that three hundred, three hundred proposal, three hundred dollars in revenue limit across the board for every district passes, I think you'll see a lawsuit. We're ready.
So, s- to that point, it, it even seems like the, the proposal you're making is even, I can see it as not enough yet. Uh, like, like it, it just, it's our foot in the door. We're making progress.
Yeah.
And we're off to a start.
Yeah.
Uh, but if you don't get that, you go down the lawsuit approach. We're going to sue for the same results. Are you going to sue to essentially equalize it across the board?
Well, that, thank you for the question. The, the question is, what would we sue for? We see the lawsuit as having a number of win scenarios. One would be where the legislature is concerned about the possibility of us winning, that they fix it, and we can drop it. Um, another would be just an outright win. And then, uh, if it does go to court and the Supreme Court decides in our favor, they would kick it back to the legislature to fix and create a new system. And then, which would probably be what I described earlier, a dollar amount per pupil with extras for student aid. Um, and then that would go back to the Supreme Court for approval or denial. So those are three win scenarios. So to answer your question.
It, it does. And, and the legislators you're talking to, do they know about those potential?
Yeah, so.
Other outcomes if they don't go this path?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a tricky, it's a sensitive topic, yeah. And, and one, uh, one staffer in particular, who is, is very, uh, close to the actual numbers, said, well, just make sure it doesn't feel like a threat. So I've, you know, I've talked about the lawsuit, and I've talked about the history, and I've talked about the level of frustration from people in our, all of our situations, you know, superintendents and board, uh, business managers, board members, community members. People are frustrated with that system. Uh, so that's what I try to talk about. And I, I say, I, I don't want it to boil over into a lawsuit scenario. We've been down that road. That's probably not the good thing to do. And they've got the money to fix it right now. And that's why, you know, you're reaching out to your, your relative, your respective constituents, and having them contact your legislators is super powerful. Because then I get the call, John, explain this to me. How does this work? Really? And they're as surprised as you are in some cases. It's funny that, that boy Brody, uh, when he testified in joint finance, he said, I don't know how old of you are, and this seems like a problem you didn't create, but guess what? You can fix it. And so it's pretty, they're like that.
But it's actually pretty safe to say that if we hadn't had this sudden influx of cash and weren't sitting on uh, a surplus of four point three billion at the state level right now.
Yes.
Legislators would probably still be less inclined, uh, to be paying attention and more inclined to act right now, only because we have that, is that?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so in the past, we've had the argument where they say, we just don't have the money. And they can't say that now. So that's pretty nice. Well, I think I've taken more time than we planned, and I really appreciate your attention. Thanks, everybody, for sticking around.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Well, I thought I shut it off. It's just going to be noisy for a second.
Okay, so yeah, thank you so much for being here. I think that was really worthwhile. Um, following this, we will, uh, move on to, uh, the public portion of our meeting. Unfortunately, I'm going to roll through the rules real quick, as quickly as I can. Uh, the communications and comments, uh, from members of the public agenda item requires anyone wishing to speak to the board must be present and register on the sign-up form. A three-minute time limit is enforced. Public comment is only accepted during this agenda item. Sharing of minutes with another person addressing the board is not permitted. Speakers should address the board as a whole, not individual board members, and should remain polite and respectful. Only the board president may respond to the comments or questions. The board president has the authority to ask the other board member or administrator to respond. Board members will not respond to public comment, uh, unless designated by the board president. The board president has the authority to cease any conversation at any time for any reason. Public comments will be taken under advisement. If public comments are in regard to an agenda item, when the board discusses that particular item during the meeting, the board may or may not address the comments, questions raised by the public. Only the board will discuss and/or take action. There will be no citizen communications during the time of agenda topics. And lastly, speakers are not immune from legal consequences related to the content of their speech. So our first up speaker is Cindy Ziegler Fritz.
Hi, thank you. Um, my name is Cindy Ziegler Fritz, and I, um, used to be a tennis coach for eight years here for the girls' and boys' varsity. Um, but I am working on the, uh, fundraising for the tennis courts. So that was part of the problem. But anyways, so, um, I just wanted to say that we, um, had a gala this last weekend. Um, and we raised rough numbers, about twenty thousand dollars. Um, we have, um, about nine thousand dollars in, um, sponsorships also, um, which is included, it's, right now, we have about sixty-six thousand dollars. That is in a special fund for Keep Love and Tennis. So, um, I just wanted to let you know that we are working very diligently on this. Um, the next thing we're going to do is we're going to put some signs up at the tennis courts. Um, so to try to get people who don't know about what we're trying to do. So we're going to try to get this raised and get some new courts. So, that's it. Thank you.
And for, for what it was worth, there were a couple of us there on Saturday. And it, it truly was just a, it was a spectacular, uh, event. Um, a lot of attention to, uh, to detail. Uh, everybody there really had a wonderful time. Um, it was just, um, it felt like four years ago, to be honest.
Yeah.
When people came together and just really enjoyed themselves, particularly around a cause. Like, uh, so, um, I don't know, Tim, if you want to add anything, Tim was there as well?
Yeah, I was there. It was a good, great time. My wife and I, um, still talk about the, the event and how much fun we had. My son will be playing tennis next year as well, so, uh, big supporter. Um, I did win the guitar. I've got it tuned. Got a couple of songs that I, I used to play when I, when I was younger, uh, so I'm, I'm back in it now. So, thank you.
And, and I have to tell you, uh, this kind of spawned, I remember standing in, in the church parking lot, probably three years ago with Cindy, uh, when she was just super determined, like, these courts need work.
Yeah.
And I, I know at that time she was having some meetings with Jeff, like, trying to figure out, oh, what the heck? Why, why can't we even take this on?
Right.
And, uh, so Cindy has, uh, worked with now, uh, kind of a committee full of people. And, um, i- it's kind of a, uh, just an amazing group of people, uh, that have, uh, uh, really been successful in raising money. So we can't thank you enough for doing what you're doing.
Yeah, we had like a hundred people there too, which was amazing. It was really great. It was, a lot of awareness was brought also to what's going on. Was, why, why do we have to want to raise money for tennis courts? So.
Yes.
Which was really good. So bringing awareness at all levels.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our second speaker is John Norcross.
Given the, uh, given the week, uh, for teacher appreciation, I want to give a sincere thank you uh, to the teachers who provided my sons, I currently have one still here, um, with a first-class education at Arrowhead, despite the many headwinds that they and their colleagues in the profession and the school have faced, um, including tight operating constraints, which we've learned about. Um, you have persevered, adapted, innovated, and endured through my student, throughout my students' time with you. Um, you've provided a balance between challenging them and encouraging them and treating them as, as the individuals they are, um, with all that makes them unique. So I want to thank, uh, all the teachers here, um, and the support staff. We're helping my kids prepare to become good thinkers, good community members, and good citizens as they step into their future. Thank you.
Was there anyone left, uh, that didn't have the opportunity to sign up that still would, uh? like to present? Okay. If not, we'll move on. Um, next, the agenda item is our consent agenda. And again, I appreciate the board's advanced review of the items contained in the consent agenda. That being the Board of Education minutes from April 12th, the April bill list, the donations, resignations, contract letters of appointment, all return professionals down, CISA One annual service contract, and annual student services agreement with Almira. And I'm wondering, Craig, if you wouldn't mind acknowledging the donations or contained inside the consent agenda.
I would be, I would be pleased to do that. I would be pleased to do that. Thanks go out to Mr. and Mrs. Troy Philippeck for Keep Love in Tennis. From Team Trimble LLC to Keep Love in Tennis. From Lake Country Eye Care LLC to Keep Love in Tennis. And from Nancy Rushman to Keep Love in Tennis. Thank you to all.
So do I have a motion to, to approve?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Do you mind if I just pull out the, the contracts just for a moment? We have, we have three new young teachers, which is exciting. Is there anything that the staff can share about those three? Steve Peterson, Nicholas Hauser, and Alicia Pastera?
If you click on their names, their resumes are there, additional background information. But the, the folks that were deep in interviewing might get something else to share.
Um, Steve Peterson is a math teacher who has about nine years' experience. He's also a coach here at Arrowhead already, in our Arrowhead football team.
They're way, supervise their way of thinking. Helps with some other things.
Yeah. So he'll be joining the math department. Nicholas Hauser is a fairly new teacher who made me cry.
It was really impressive.
Made me cry in the interview. I, I, I know. But his earnest, inspiring, go get them attitude is, was, I guess, a need for me that day where I was like, wow. We have, by the way, very big candidates for this. And Allie Pastera has five years' experience, just recently taught in France and is back here, back here, ready to, to get back into teaching. We had a lot of Allies. A lot of Allies. A lot of Allies for French. But anyway, um, very impressed with what we're, what we're adding for our faculty. We have a few more others, yes, to do. It's been a good process. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So next up, we have board reorganization, election of officers. So this evening, we accept nominations from the board around the offices of President, Vice President. Thank you. Treasurer and, and clerk. And following the nomination and acceptance of the nomination, the nominee has to have the majority of votes to be awarded a position. Just as a review, our board policy does stipulate that we typically will use a paper process for, for the, the balloting process. But it seems in more frequent years that that's kind of gone out the window. And we've typically done more of a show of hands. So I'd like to open it up to whatever the thoughts of the board are as far as how to proceed with, with the election.
And we do, just so you know, we are prepared. Kate's prepared, if you want to do ballot nominations, there's a green slip in front of you. If you want to do it that way for anonymity. And then the voting can be on paper or prepared if you wanted to do that.
Did I understand, isn't the policy, it's one way or the other?
I believe the policy does read that it is a paper process, albeit we've kind of waived the policy in pretty much all recent history and done it through a show of hands. So it really gets down to what the board would like to.
It seems you should probably, our policy.
That would be fine. Then Kate and John can collect them up, correct? Okay. Is that good with the board?
Might be quicker just to put hands up in the air like we did last year.
Yeah, I think, you know, the last several.
What did you hear before last year, Greg? Can you guys get on this or?
This is always verbal.
I think it's been verbal, but I was not aware that we had a policy contrary to that, quite frankly. So that's, I'm in conflict now.
It, it was reviewed last year as well. That, you know, that is some.
It's not a hill I'm gonna die on, I just, I wasn't aware of.
Well, Rich, we should take a vote. If, if, for those that would be in favor of a show of hands, maybe show of hands.
Hands was for hands?
Hands, hands for hands.
Just for vote nomination and vote.
Um, it would be for, for, for the vote. Good, right. Yeah, it looks like the hands have it. So we'll, we'll move ahead with that then. So first up, I would entertain nominations for the position of Board President.
I'll second. I'd like to nominate Tim Leonard.
Interested in Tim?
Uh, I didn't ask for it, but I did stand, stand for it last year. And I guess I feel like it's helpful, they have two options.
I'll second. See, a second. And you would accept the nomination, Tim?
Yes.
As, as put on. Uh, so I guess we will go to a vote, show of hands. For Kim Schuber. I think we have it. Thank you. And I'm, I'm honored to accept the position.
Right. Can I, can I make a little bit within this format?
Oh, of course.
Okay, I, I just wanted to say that I, 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 I think this board is greatly enriched by the hard work that our president has done for the last year. Often putting in full time hours and hard research into taking this job very seriously. So I think we are, we are the richer board on this board.
Thank you. Next up, I would entertain nominations for the position of Vice President. I think I'll mention Chris Harris, or I'll nominate this guy.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. On paper, show of hands? Thank you. Thank you. And I would likewise make comments, I, I think in terms of Chris's contributions throughout all of last year. I think, I think you made things run. Policy and your contributions for everything I've reported on, so we, we thank you for it tomorrow. Uh, next up is Treasurer, nominations for the Treasurer position. I'll wait to meet.
Go ahead.
I'll man a meeting, Tim.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Show of hands for Tim Evers for Treasurer. Thank you, Tim, for stepping up and taking that position again.
Absolutely.
And lastly, for position of clerk, I would like to nominate Amy Hammer for that position.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? A show of hands for Amy. Thank you all so much. Okay, we got the top part out of the way. Moving on to committee reports. First up is Chairperson Hammer with curriculum.
Thank you. We had our curriculum meeting on, on April 27th. And the topic that was forefront of the discussion was the schedule. As many know, the AP block schedule, the board told that was not in favor of that when December, like last year came around. Um, but it wasn't a dead issue. We've always kept that in the forefront that we needed to work on something, especially after learning that a lot of our teachers aren't happy with the current ten period date. So what happened during our meeting was just a kind of back and forth with administration and the board. They presented the prolegial terms and certain things, and we voiced some of our opinions as to what we thought we could be looking into or different alternatives. So we finally came up with after, that took the whole meeting period, we didn't get to another target because it was so important. So we are going to be looking at a review of scheduled alternatives with phone and tons, as well as an administrative, executive summary of each scheduled option at our next board meeting, our committee meeting. So we'll delve more into that and hopefully look at options. And we are still, are planning on a made curriculum committee, or not a made one, uh, just a general workshop meeting sometime in the summer to really get into the career once we've met again. So we did discuss summer professional learning, so I don't know if that will be on our motion.
Yeah, that's.
Going forward, that's what.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm wondering if you might have an update. I'm, I'm looking at the meeting minutes. Looking at the, the proposal, I think that went out to the English department with regards to student letters of advocacy. So if, if it were possible. Yeah, so for second semester, they don't do the letters of advocacy as part of the curriculum. We talked about, you know, that being a topic of the future. Department, team indicated that if they continue with letters of advocacy, they'll throw that in the mix. If it was time sensitive, it probably would be a good one. So. Depending what happens in the summer, we could still be on the call with the opportunity to still advocate that, so for sure. Yeah, thank you for putting your questions out together. Okay, um, we'll move on to Chairperson Tyson with Finance and Legislation.
Good job. Um, sorry about that. We had our meeting on the second and I believe every member was present, either one person virtual and everyone else was in person. So I think we're all pretty familiar with what was discussed there. We talked about facility use fees, student fees. We examined them. Many of them have been just incrementally raised by a dollar or so. A year in the past, we had a discussion about raising them farther or more than that simply because it hasn't been keeping up with inflation. So there's discussion about increasing fees due to the inflation. Much of the rest of this meeting was either covered by guest speaker or we have action items. Seven, eight of them coming here regarding each of the issues that we discussed in the meeting. So I think we could just go and proceed with each of those action items and discussions on those items. That you can share. So the second one, or the first action item here is in fact the discussion and action to join the Association for Equity and Funding. For whom we had a guest speaker just moments ago. Through a curveball to us, I think. Uh, I don't think I've ever found a nonprofit organization, assume that's what I'm saying, that doesn't block your money. So it's interesting. So I think we have a discussion to, maybe our discussion should be around what was perhaps suggested. We vote for a funding for this to be implemented later, depending upon whether the organizations open its doors. Or perhaps we just say no for now and we can bring it up with a later date. What is it possible? There's 2,000.
I pulled it up, it's actually a thousand dollars for us to join. So it's 2,001 to 3,000 students. It's $1,000 to join. So they break it down by how many is your enrollment?
I think it has to be table. Gratitude for the presentation and the efforts that are going on in this organization. And in particular, in support of women and her efforts to track down an organization that aligns for what our needs really are right now. I would think that for the school year 2023, 24, if this organization remains in business, that we authorize funding for paying for membership. $1,000. I, I kind of think we need to table it, to be honest. We don't know what the, what the budget is gonna, what's gonna happen with the budget, what ADF might be advocating for post. You know? July for that matter. So we may want to revisit exactly what it is that we're getting out of the organization, depending on what happens. But because their priorities might change. So, I mean.
And I have a member of the organization, so I can bring back if messages change and all of that. You can also sign up just through John and he'll send you also the information as well.
Then what, what does being a member, being a school member do? What, what else can we assume we, that we participate in, what's the benefit there?
Yeah, so for instance, uh, he sent me a link that has the pre-written letters that are going to the representatives for us, as well as any other data and information, that there's some stuff that's behind his or her name and password that way. So, and it's also again, uniting the districts. We all say that there's four students behind it. One of the things that he did not put in his presentation is right now, they're roughly representing about 10, or 10% of the students in Wisconsin public schools. So it's starting to cause more noise in order to say, this is what this organization is representing. Not that it's little pockets here and there. And that's what makes the difference, unfortunately, at Madison.
A part of it.
Yeah.
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 I think it doesn't hurt, I agree with Brandon, it doesn't hurt to table this, at least for people. And then since you're already on the inside, continue to share.
That would seem to make sense, particularly as if things don't go optimistically, it would appear that there would be potential for pending lawsuit. It would be nice to know what that's gonna look like, before we get involved in that as well. Okay, so.
I can withdraw, withdraw my second. I, I, it's, it's not particularly a big issue. Hold on in the room, I have to draw my motion.
So the, the action will be to, to table it until following the, the outcome of the signatures on the budget. I'm understanding correctly. Okay.
Do we need to vote?
Um. The motion was withdrawn, so I don't have to vote on it. No motion or vote on it. Thank you.
Hey, the next item is discussion and action to approve a resolution for continued school funding advocacy with legislators. Then thankfully made us aware of this resolution that was available. It was distributed to all of us through email. It's a movie, we've all had a chance to look at it. It's a movie. We've all had a chance to look at it. For members of the public, we're basically just reiterating what our guest speakers told us in a resolution, given the situation in school funding at the state level. And then the resolution in final paragraph simply states this, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education or the R H Union High School District does hereby resolve to fully and completely support AEF in its proposal for a fifteen hundred dollar increase in the low revenue limit, as well as a significant, as significant increases in special education aid. And we have an opportunity to put the sports support behind that resolution if we choose to do so now.
Is there any further discussion on this?
What's your thought here? Is this a good one? My concern here is still kind of going back to the one question I asked. Almost doesn't seem like enough, and it seems like we're advocating fifteen hundred dollars, although a benefit still doesn't get us ideally where we want to go. If it's start, it certainly get behind the start, but I would honestly ask for more. Not in a position to ask for more, but I don't want it to settle shortness.
I think part of this was there was a unity around this particular figure.
I get that.
This is what you presented in workshop, correct, when we were all together legislative advocacy with regards to numbers. But that was just an overall limit to the per pupil amount for everyone. So this is a bigger number. It gets significant help. It would equalize things. It would take the unfairness that I had up on the board earlier out of the system quite a bit. I mean, not completely out, but it would make, it would level the thing quite a bit. You lift us to eleven thousand five hundred, that's a thousand dollars for a student. That, that gets us a lot closer to the own brooks and the. The other option, I mean, Gatorade passed the referendum. They went from third from the bottom to second from the top with their referendum. And now they're able to do some facility improvements that we can't. So I, I, I don't think it would. I mean, I don't know why you wouldn't support the proposal, other than asking for more, but who's asking for, who's asking for more? You know, if there's support around it, and if we can get, one thing I heard from legislators, if you're all on the same page and you're asking for the same thing, that's helpful versus all over the board.
And to that end, Jeff, do you, do you know kind of where consensus lies on the special ed aid requests? Are they coming in around a certain number or how does that look?
Well, the, the ask from the governor's proposal was sixty percent. Everyone would, any help on that special ed aid would help. We spend one point eight million dollars out of our general fund to backfill the special education so it can be whole. And that's by law, we have to do that. So we've got that in our budget proposal that as an assumption right now. Now we've got ideas and, and levers in place to pull if that doesn't come true, but that is our lighter assumption going into it. So what are they asking for? Sixty percent, you know, but anything, you know, we've been at twenty-four, twenty-five percent for so long, it's just this year we got thirty, I think, thirty percent. You know, if you, you do this long enough, you start to get beat down and you're frustrated with it, like gosh, they're never going to move it, but there is some money this year, so it does feel like we can get some action.
But it is a little sad when it's, it's almost like you get excited about thirty percent funding for special education when special education became law through IDEA, it came with a two-thirds funding promise. That's never, it's never happened, and it's not even close. So that sixty percent is trying to get to the, the promise that was made back in seventies. But that's, that's how long it's been underfunded, that we're happy about thirty percent. And hoping for anything more.
And we don't have to feel that this has a referendum system. So any help from the state, special education funding, low revenue funding, it'll help us be able to start to prepare some facilities. It's not gonna, it's not gonna do the big referendum piece, but it's just so tight right now. It's unfortunate that we can't fix some of the things that we shouldn't be.
Okay, so I think we were at a motion to approve, had a second. All in favor of the first motion? Say aye. Motion carries.
If you could all see me at the end, I have that for you to sign.
The next item on the finance agenda is the approval or, or the vote on a discussion about facility use fees, and we had a discussion about that. Need to go. There isn't a lot of change in the facility use as there is on the student fees, but you can see in your packet that what we are really at this point. I would move to approve the so use the schedule as Jeff modified it for our discussion.
I have a question, Jeff. From legislative standpoint.
Yes.
I was just gonna maybe throw up the fact that we let the public stew on this one a little bit, considering it's only brought up in the bill. That's an issue. Granted, a lot of this is major impact and cost to be right there. We wanted to consider that, I thought.
This is an annual item, so it's, public would be used to it and know it's coming. It's a, it's a set of a dollar increase. We're talking a few dollar, three dollar increase. You know, so we went with the four percent across the board and rounded it up, so. I don't imagine you're gonna hear a whole lot from the public about this.
If I know what you're speaking of, Brandon, I think that was a one-time kind of surprise. But this is an annual normal course of events.
I would encourage any one that shouldn't sign some of these.
Okay, so we've got a motion to approve. We've got a second. All in favor? Say aye. Motion carries.
Next item is discussion and action on the student fee schedule. Similarly, we've made some cost of living adjustments here. And it's an annual item. And I would move that we approve these as modified by Jeff for our discussion. At about roughly a four percent cost of living increase in each case. Well, four, excuse me, four percent is not an accurate, accurate number for cost of living, but we are trying to keep up with it at least a little bit.
And of course, fees, again, reminder, they're aligned with the actual spend on for supplies. So we didn't really adjust those much of anything other than where there was changes needed. Some book costs and a workbook that's being implemented. Our book fee, which we haven't raised in many, many years, is fifteen dollar increase. And the other ones, our minor increases again also.
Anything further? All in favor of approving the student fee schedule? Say aye. Motion carries.
And then we have the preliminary budget presentation that Jeff has done such an admirable job of giving us. Are you going to show that again, Jeff?
Or I bet you don't know. Did you want to go through the presentation? Do you interest in that? I love talking about it, you know.
I think committee, we did talk about a brief presentation. The board is so familiar with it, but for the sake of community members and video, if I knew beneficial.
I feel like Leonard Skinner not playing free bird, Jeff. So in your, see the next agenda down on there, if you link, if you clicked on that, that's a big, long letter, and I'm going to summarize that letter here. So that's the plan. At the end, the letter shows all the numbers behind the verbs, verbiage in there, and this is just a summary of everything here. So. Anyway, we've prepared a physically sound budget based on some assumptions here that we don't know. We're in a, we're in a tough year. Anytime you're going into a biennium, you don't know what the state's going to do. We know they have some money. Hopefully, there will be some funding that comes to schools. If you haven't heard it, I'll say it again, anything, because I just like saying that revenue limits are the important pieces, the size of the pie revenue. And if we don't have enough money to operate, we're not able to fix facilities. We have focused all of our limited revenues toward instruction. So we're paying attention to the kids and the instruction, teachers, that instructional piece first. And unfortunately, it doesn't align the talks to do a whole lot of stuff. So we've created a physically sound budget here. We're in the first year of the proposed biennial budget, which we don't know. We're going off of the governor's proposal. That's all we know. We haven't heard anything from legislators, one way or other. So it's all we really have to go on, so it's something to base it on. Our head count, we make a projection on that. We feel like we're going to be down from two thousand forty-two heads in the seats. I'm sorry, from two thousand seventy-six down to two thousand twenty-two. That includes open enrollment kids that are coming in. That's not what our revenue limit is driven off of though, back then. We've had conservative budget planning in the last two years and many years along the way. Before that, that's the only way to make it on the revenue limit for whatever we have being for the bottom account and still able to compete for talent. And that's going to become more and more challenging under the limits that we have intended, unless that resolution that you guys just passed actually comes to fruition, where we lift the lower revenue ceiling. We're utilizing the remainder of our S R funding this year in the upcoming year to, to be able to balance this budget. That's one-time funding. So when that goes away, now we've got a hole. So hopefully the state is going to help start with that. With the word approval tonight of this preliminary budget, that proposed budget that would go to a budget hearing in the annual meeting held in August, that's the budget to the August meeting, unless we see some changes at the state level that would you know, offer up an opportunity to make a change in July, so. But then go to the annual meeting, take it to the electorate, the electorate will vote on that budget. The budget is set finalized in October. So the electorate gives their, their, their recommendations if that, or listens to, to what we're planning to do. And then we actually, as a board, you're required to approve a budget that we can operate with. Our general capital expansion fund, I included those two funds because they're controlled within the it's down point seven percent, almost one percent down on the overall expenditures. We have to bring it down to be able to come in line with the revenues that we have to work with. Student counts down a little bit too. But you don't want to line things up. Overall, we're down almost a percent. Personnel, increase in wages and benefits is a three point four percent. It's what's built into this budget. That includes the increases that we're putting up before potential action tonight, special action. Our net, our staffing is net neutral. The health insurance increase, we were facing a twelve percent. We're changing the way we're funding our health insurance going into next year, and we've been able to keep that to a percent. It's what we've got built into the budget. And they were on Lames experience, about our high technical plans, and I think it comfortable. I think we're going to do really well on this. I think it's, insurance companies have been making money off of us, and now it's our turn to keep some of that. Continuing budget, this is for our regular continuing services, the insurances, the utilities, the supplies, the equipment. We kept the department budgets flat again. They haven't increased for as long as I've been here, and I'm sure quite a number of years before I was here, they've been flat. The we're using the governor's proposed sixty percent categorical aid funding on the special ed reimbursement. And that's called special ed categorically aid. That's a big number. It's a big increase in revenue to be able to offset the cost of that special ed transfer from the general fund. So if that doesn't come through, we're going to have other levers that we have to pull. I already talked about department budgets. We've got a decrease in open enrollment expense predicted, just based on the number of seniors that will be leaving and the new applications again. And then that savings is also offset by a decrease in the amount of revenue coming in. In this budget, so to date, we're projecting a twelve thousand dollars, so one and a half students difference there. Special education. A decrease in that net cost, mostly because of the state aid coming in, you know, based on the governor's proposal. That's nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollar increase in that aid. Category eighty-eight percent. On the supplemental budget, this is where we made a lot of our reductions. This was an eight hundred thousand dollar budget to fix, repair, add equipment, replace textbooks, implement technology improvements. And we had to reduce some of those things. We needed to take care of the continuing and the supplemental things. As much as we still need many of them, we had to just reduce, we had to find places to cut. So you'll see, we've reduced those. We're down to a hundred sixteen thousand in textbooks and equipment. That's down from a hundred forty-six last year for current year, a hundred fifty-eight the year before. Technology, we're down to one fifty-eight thousand spending there. Supplemental, we're down from two hundred seventy-two thousand currently, three hundred thirteen the year prior. In athletics, we didn't touch for the second year or third year roll, okay? We took, they're operating on thirty-seven thousand. It's supplemental, so it's, it's not allowed. They, they optimize for what they need, any additional things. Capital expansion in the buildings and grounds area. That's for remodeling and maintenance and repairs. We've got three hundred thousand and one forty-one that we use for taking care of roofs. Roofing projects. And then we've got a hundred fifteen thousand in recitation classroom. Protection systems. To replace some ten, twelve-year-old systems, some that are barely operable anymore, so just the, the high need ones. Oh, and then some lighting efficiency upgrades, about forty-five thousand worth of lighting efficiency upgrades that we're going to put in there. Then I've got a hundred thousand dollars planned use of fund balance to take care of that full electrical project. That'll be built into this budget. But you'll see, we're actually in a deficit budget by a hundred thousand to take care of that. Debt service, we're in the ninth. Now, we've said we don't have any debt. We don't have any referendum approved debt. That's all paid off. So this is a piece of debt out there. It was for the design engineering manufacturing at South Campus. It was a ten-year trust fund loan for, was it a million dollars?
Million.
Million dollars, and we're on our second to last payment on that, hundreds of thousand dollars a year. When that is paid off, then we'll have that additional revenue to operate with. But there's all the things for that. Other post-employment benefits, we don't have them anymore. They're all paid off. One hundred percent. We'll close out the O P F Fund Seventy-Three Trust Fund. If we don't get it done this year, it'll be closed next year, but we'll be down to a zero balance. We've already completed it down to a zero. It's just a matter of going through the legalities to get it closed. Debt service, I talked about already. This is our third year with no longer debt expense. We made our final payment in two thousand nineteen, twenty. If we replace that payment with one point seven million to do facility projects, one-time money that pulls off the books one year, comes back on, pulls off, it doesn't stack like our Newbury District stacked. It doesn't stack like our Newbury District stacked their referendum, which was great for them. You know, that's how they're able to do some things that were not. On the revenue side. We've got a one point three million dollar decrease in that tax property tax revenues anticipated. Nine hundred sixteen thousand of that for fifty percent is the projected state aid decrease. And aid is based on property value per member. Our property value went up quite a bit. Our membership residence student count went down. What did I say early? Property value goes up, students go down, you have more property value per student. Makes us look richer in the formula. We're going to lose, we're anticipating to lose fifteen percent. Hopefully I'm wrong. But we know our value went up five point eight percent, membership went up one point two percent, share cost stayed about the same. And we'll get an estimate in July. I don't rely too heavily on that. Get a better estimate in late August, and then we'll get the finalized number in October. And remember, aid, state aid, this general state aid offsets the amount of our total revenues to work with. Aid reduces the property tax. Doesn't give us more to work with. Open enrollment, we've got a small decrease that we're anticipating in the open enrollment revenue. And with that, the assumption is there's no increase in the amount per pupil. So that's probably very conservative. So there's a, there's a lever that will be about full as needed. And then a small increase in the per pupil categorically going with the governor's budget of a twenty-four dollar per pupil increase in that. Category. So this budget replaces the full revenue limit authority that we have available to us. Which is a decrease of a hundred eighteen thousand. From last year to this year. Even with a three hundred and fifty dollar per student decrease. We're anticipating our revenue limit to go down a hundred eighteen thousand. That means our, our, our revenue available to operate with will go down a hundred eighteen thousand. Even with the three hundred fifty dollar decrease per student, did I say? So our three-year average membership will be down twenty-four students. We're at one thousand nine hundred forty-one current year. Next year, we anticipate that being one thousand nine hundred seventeen. It'll be locked in when we get our September count. Then we'll know that number pretty sure. We have to use an estimate at this point. And that's a three-year average number too, the nineteen seventeen, so three-year average. So we'll be pretty darn close on that. Property tax levy is at seventeen and a half million. That's a projected increase of almost eight hundred thousand dollars in the levy. The total money we have to operate with is down a hundred eighteen thousand. Did I say that? Right. But our levy is going to go up by eight hundred thousand. Explain that to the taxpayers. How does that work? It's because of the loss in the state aid. So we're anticipating losing about nine hundred thousand dollars in state aid. Take the hundred eighteen thousand dollar loss of total revenue off of that, and it leaves you with a seven hundred ninety-eight thousand dollar increase in property taxes. Makes sense? Let's see. Mill rate then, assuming a seven percent increase in the property value, we'll see our mill rate go down from two dollars and ten cents per thousand dollars of property value. Down to two dollars and five cents. So what if our property value doesn't increase seven percent? But if it only goes up four and a half percent? Use that number because that's what it is under the plan to keep it at two dollars and ten cents. Now, we, if we get less than a four and a half percent increase in the property value, then we would see a higher building. But I don't see that happening. I think between four and a half and seven percent, likely our mill rate would come down from where it is. And it has come down every year. That I've been here and I think prior to me, it, it started to come down. As your revenue limit gets to be less and less. Even with the loss in state aid. The property value increases help reduce the rate. They don't use the relevant. I just threw these slides in there for fun. This is because Mr. Humphries was here earlier. And this is the look at Wachshut County. We compete with these districts for talent to come and work at Arrowhead. Rather than, you know, we want them here. We want the most talented here. But you can see every year. Elmer has two point nine million. That's good for them, you know? In five years, that's almost fifteen million. So if we just lifted everyone by what John Humphries mentioned tonight to eleven thousand five hundred. We'd be in the ballpark of Manami Falls that give us about one point seven million dollars more to operate with. In five years, that's almost nine million dollars. In ten years, it's almost eighteen million. We can do some facility improvements, you know? But it's not on what we're doing. I, you know, Mesquite, Wachshut, McWhanago, even tougher there. And then, let's see. The other one was the Union High School. Did you see that earlier? This is the Union High Schools. There's ten of them in the state. Our allowed revenue per pupil is ten thousand five hundred dollars. And Nicolay is at fifteen thousand eight hundred at the top. So Nicolay gets ten million dollars more every year to work with and operate with. And educate their kids, which only adds up to about fifty million over five years.
And they pass referendums all the time.
In a hundred million in ten years, right? So it's, those are the inequities that John Humphries was talking about tonight. And a big lift to bring everyone, you know, you put the low revenue ceiling, the lower revenue floor, I guess. From ten thousand to eleven thousand five hundred, it'll bring people more in line. You're still going to have the outliers.
While this chart is up, I'll just add, if you looked at what students achievement, Arrowhead zooms to the top. So we're the lowest spending. We are at the top of that list of Union High Schools. And we want to keep our excellent students, our supportive families, our incredibly talented staff. And that all matters to student achievement. So I think it's remarkable what this school district has been doing with low funding. But yet keeping student achievement higher than that whole list. How long can we sustain it? We've been putting the money into kids and teachers and classrooms, as Jeff said, in order to preserve student achievement. But then we have tennis courts that are falling apart. We have works that are leaking. We have, and the list goes on and on.
Yeah, right. Minister Sean's done a great job of prioritizing what's important, obviously. The link doesn't necessarily mean you're going to learn more out of it, right? Not to say we don't need to change things here, and I think that's going to be the priority as we move forward. But thank you guys have done a great job prioritizing what's important in education.
Absolutely.
We get a lot of bang for our buck here.
Right. But we do need safe facilities. And dry ones.
So the next document has the numbers. I'm just the lucky one that can talk about this stuff. But this whole team right here, we sat in many, many meetings, hours, and just painful discussions about what is going to be cut next. That's where we're going, unfortunately, unless something happens. I mean, we're hopeful that something happens. Say that, I'm losing hope though, because there's so many years where you think you might get something. We haven't. Maybe with the surplus, you might get some help here. If not, we're going to have to talk about our next steps locally. In terms of referendum or not. If not, what sort of, let's see.
This is what you heard from John, he said, give you more hope, or is that just keep your hope where it was?
No, that gives me a lot of hope, actually. I wasn't expecting, I mean, when he was talking about even a thousand dollars, if they're talking about that. That's a big number. And that means it goes to eleven thousand. That doesn't mean we get a thousand dollars. But it brings the floor to eleven thousand. So that would bring us up four hundred and fifty dollars. And I've got three hundred and fifty built in right now. And then we'll see what happens in the next year. So that would be, it's a huge help. When you're at the bottom, and we're not in worst case, so I shouldn't complain, right? Because Mesquite and McWhanago and Wachshut are in tougher shape. But they're passing facility referendums in those districts too. And that's why their facilities, look at Mesquite facilities. They're not doing it through revenue limit. They're doing it through capital referendums. That's how they're doing their facilities. Wachshut, similar, McWhanago, look at some of their facilities. They've passed major capital referendums in recent years, and that's how they're doing it. We haven't passed one for, what's since nineteen ninety-nine? That's only twenty-four years, you know?
You, you mentioned the Waterford, remember, two lowest in the state. Out here, thirteen of that grew both capital and operation? Operation referendums? How did they get there?
That's not capital. So those are, those are recurring referendums or operating.
For operations, but they've also done capital. Their, their, their facility now looks fantastic.
Beyond all that.
That would be above and beyond.
Yeah, yeah, but they've done both.
So when you do, we did an operating referendum, but it was a non-recurring. And so that doesn't lift this number up for us, because it's, it's one-time money really that's going to go away. When you do a recurring referendum, that's money that stays in there. And that's how Kettle Marine went from, they were down in Mesquite, even below us. And then when they passed that recurring referendum, they're now at eleven thousand seven hundred. I'm not sure if this is the last year of them going up, or if they've got one more year in line. They're going to be darn close to Elmer, maybe exceed them if they've got one more year left. If they've got a year left, they're going to exceed, they're going to be at the top. And, and they're our neighbor, and we're competing for kids, talent, and families. We've got great staff. We've got great families and great kids. We want to keep it that way. But this is what, this is our competition.
Well, we already made cuts here. We talked about sitting those beds, making cuts. We just had a full yield cut. I got programming that works really well, that costs a little bit of money, and we pulled back on that for the next year. We'll come back and see if we can add it back in next year. But transportation's a huge barrier. We were able to pay for some transportation costs for that program. It's bringing a lot of our students into the field of manufacturing and good paying jobs on a high school that are in the special education program. And you pull back to bring people out to Manami Falls, it won't happen next year. And they have to reassess them going forward. So, but there, there's been impact already.
And I think that's one of the things I mentioned.
Right, class. We had, we have great programming with enriched English and Polish studies curriculum. That's been impacted. That's gone away now, and some actually regular, something like the strong boating that we had. Gone away. So the, 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 starting to feel it. And I think next year is the first time that, I think. It's the first time that students within programming will start to feel the impact.
And we've done a bunch of hiding it, and I don't know if that's a good thing. You know, we've been able to just manage the budget and figure it out. And now we're, we had the enrichment class had to go away. You know, it was expensive. And we're still able to provide the education, but that was what became a luxury that we had to just pull it out.
I think perspective wise, it's important to continue to remember that, you know, the. The topic that we're putting forth is a very highly rated product. You know, we have a, a, a great education that we're giving to our kids, to the kids that are open and rolling. And I, I, I would continue to want to, no matter what happens. As we move forward, whether it's you want to have a referendum, so different pieces that are going to come into the state. To continue to have that mentality, which I know we will with the staff that we have here, will fly in an opposite direction. The hometown that I come from passed an eighty million dollar referendum. There, they keep falling in their placement, and very small communities around them are getting all the students because their product is better. But they think, okay, we build this eighty million dollar, you know, Taj Mahal, we're going to, everybody's going to come in. And that's not, that's not how it works. It, it's about the product, just like you're shopping for college. It's about creating, you know, finding great education, saying that. Kudos to us and to the staff and to all of you guys for the great situation.
Thank you for the presentation.
And we simply have one more action item, and that is discussion and action on the preliminary budget for next year. Jeff has just gone through all the numbers that he's also been summarized in this letter under that link. Pretty much a different format for the same information. So at this point, I guess we could have any further discussion if you wish. Or we can, I know that we accept the budget as, as presented.
All second.
Any favor? All in favor? Accepting the preliminary budget? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Our next meeting date to be determined. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson. Uh, next up is Chairperson Beck at Building in Browns.
So we had our last buildings and grounds meeting, committee meeting on May the fourth. We had a long agenda, but we got through about one and a half items there. But it was a productive meeting, to say the least. The three things for buildings and grounds, I just want to emphasize here, these are all based on. Looking at donations. And then also, the first one I want to talk about is the scoreboard where. It is, it is a large expense, but it is a revenue generating opportunity. Where we're looking at the lifespan of the scoreboard being ten years. And I think we'll hit the break even point, given sponsorships as they fall through according to plan those first five years. Brian did give an update and said that three of the four target anchor sponsors are secured. As, and he is working with the, close with the fourth one to finalize that sponsorship. We did, as a, all board members were attendants, we did give Ryan the direction to move forward with. Build, getting the new scoreboard in there. Timing is of the essence, as we want to get that scoreboard up there in August. In time for the first, in time for fall sports, so not just football, but other sporting activities there. So just want to have a big shout out for Ryan of working, you know, he puts together a ton of activities. But also put on the sales hat too, of getting these sponsorships secured. So a big win there. We also talked about. The proposed batting facility. Where I think the initial estimating cost for that was about two hundred thousand dollars. And there is a committee out there that is full force with fundraising efforts. Where they have raised roughly about fifty thousand dollars for this project, thirty thousand cash, twenty grand in sponsorships. We did, he did get a unique proposition from a potential donor, looking at timing of the essence is. If we can, if they can build it by fall, he will secure the rest of the funds for us. Or at least contribute as we continue with fundraising efforts. So given that the committee did agree to use the portion that's already raised to start the design planning and costing of the batting facility. Once the additional funds are secured, before the building begins, Ryan will provide an update at a future committee meeting. Jeff, is there anything to add on those two items?
No, we're, we're working on it. We've had some meetings to get wheels in motion, get some design work done. Find a location, make sure it's going to fit. Hopefully we can meet the timeline to be able to get the funding, funding source, keep that happening.
All right, excellent. And then we also, in addition to the. Board and administration, we also had Mark from the Lake Country Swim talk about the status update of fundraising efforts for the new pool. Fortunately, it's not a pool that pay all the money's raised, we're breaking ground next week. It is a process of, um, where. Mark and his team committee are very diligent and going through, um, consulting with the process of, um. Looking at fundraising efforts, um, where it said it may take, you know, twelve to eighteen months. But we are there looking to, um. Looking at the fundraising efforts and looking to enter an agreement, Lake Country Swim is looking to enter an agreement. With abundance of fundraising for the cost of about, uh, eight thousand dollars a month for the first four months. Possible extension if necessary, um, there are, you know. Questions here in terms of the fundraising efforts of what we can do as a school to support them. Basically, just looking at, you know, um, with our budgets, we don't have. Anything there to help with the capital, but with the potential referendum, we did talk about. Getting a survey out there by, um, s- s- school perceptions that. School possibly use school perceptions to see if a a pool, if have funding a pool.
Survey form from, okay, to determine if there's.
But, um, anyway, with the, um, pool, they are, you know, making progress of, you know, get togethers with committees to. See what is out there in terms of potential donors for funding them, so we'll just stay tuned on that. The other, to finish off the conversation for the swim pool, um, one of the topics of concern was the electrical upgrade. Uh, which was, you know, brought to our attention last year, uh, Kevin did get some bids. On there, and the lit, the bids did come in lower as anticipated. And along with those bids came with a timeline, and, um, the board agreed, um, to move forward with the, um. With one contracting firm and with their timeline, uh, this will be happening during the summer, which will cause disruption. Potential disruption of an estimated one to two week shutdown of pool operations, uh, more likely happening in the month of September. The board did, um, agree with that, Ryan is, uh, working to make alternate arrangements during that. One to two week time period, um, as it is in the midst of the fall swim, swim season. And our next buildings and grounds meeting will be June the first, um, topics that will be discussed there is. Our plans for, um, using referendum money for, um, building the grounds improvements. And then also, we will have two, uh, guest speakers, uh, which are students that are part of the advocacy letters, so. It'll be great to hear from them, and again, that's on, um, Thursday, June the first.
Here, I had a question, my reading is right that the fundraising company is charging eight thousand dollars a month for their service.
Not to us.
And he did ask like if we would be able to be on that, if he didn't make it at all.
Okay, thank you so much, Chairperson Danica. Uh, moving on to personnel with Chairperson Langer.
Uh, April nineteenth, we had a meeting that, uh, mostly focused on the. Employee handbook and the thirty-six sections that we had. Played hands on, modified, um, the. There was some discussion, uh, in closed session, uh, regarding our meeting with. Uh, representatives of the teachers union on May one, um, all of that's addressed to. That part of the reports on that, that here. Focusing on the, uh, employee handbook, there's a. The first few pages of the link there, uh, show each of the changes. We went into, uh, almost all of those in great detail at the committee meeting, and then that find the. Revisit them except as requested by, uh, board members, but I do see that there are. Some legal updates and revisions that were not a, uh, important part of our. Committee discussion, I guess, Jeff, I got, you delete the, the committee, I just asked you to point us to anything that you think is.
All of them are really legal updates, every year we send it to Bob Butler, uh, the WSB helped us with this handbook initially, and they helped us with the updates. Do a quick review, uh, give us the latest legal updates, and that's what you'll find, uh, in blueprint. Uh, in red print, some adjustments that we made at the committee meeting that I then incorporated, so I just wanted to note those in red, so you could look for those adjustments being made. And the black ones, there was, what we brought to committee, there's no change on those, in those first, uh, of those services items, so, nothing. In my mind, from the legal standpoint, really stands out, it's updates that, uh, keep us in compliance with our handbook. But if there's questions that you have to. Answer, any of those, or try.
So I will tell you that I reviewed the adjustments that were, um, drawn from our discussion and committee and everything. Looked exactly like what I reported discussing. One item in particular that kind of came up near the end was, uh, language of, uh, that recognizes. Truism, which is that, uh, when our employees can file grievances that. Superintendent is one of our employees, and therefore they could file, that person could file a grievance, but. That puts us in an awkward position where the person ordinarily, ordinarily be the, you know, center fielder catching all this stuff and reporting it to the. Board is now not out in center field anymore, it's present. I I looked through the language, there's some guidance given to the president on what to, what what should happen in. At the moment that a superintendent should file a grievance, how to proceed, I think, looks fine, and it looks like what we discussed. Say, anybody have a concern about any particular item in here that you wanna dive into? I realize we're cutting out about an hour and a half of conversation at the committee level, but that's why we have. I think that's gonna be our, uh, first action item is approval of the, uh, employee handbook.
I'd like to move to approve the playbook for coming here as noted.
Anything further to enter discussion on this? If not, um. All in favor of approving the motion?
Uh, so. May one was. What continues to astonish me is some of the friendliest union negotiations I've ever witnessed in my life. Our staff and our union representatives, uh, come in with useful and thoughtful suggestions on how we can. Work within our budget and try and, um, show our appreciation for staff. I guess the dollars and cents are probably the most important part of this, but I would. Want to hang off on some of the other first here at the end. Jeff, I guess I'm gonna ask you to, uh, walk through the base wage versus supplemental pay. Process, both in proper order.
Yep, so. Uh, base wages were allowed by law to bargain up to the CPI increase for the year, which was eight percent for contracts renewing on July one. Uh, we came in with our proposal at six point seven four percent of base wages, which ended up being a four percent per cell increase on the salary schedule. And the union took their vote actually yesterday, and they agreed to move forward with that, so which. It's the first year we haven't given the full CPI on base wages. The CPI is eight percent, and, you know, the the last year was the second highest at four point seven percent. But there's been years where.
Which, which landed with a two point eight percent raise, I think that's.
Correct.
That can be confusing for the community of your six percent or four percent.
Right, so.
Base wage is a complicated formula, it really results in lower.
And I'll try to simplify, I'll just real quick, for those that are here, you take every teacher where they are on the salary schedule and you move to that base. Base of the salary schedule number. Now you multiply how many teachers, there are times that number, and that's your base wages. Increase that by, uh, an agreed upon percentage, and you have a pool of dollars to work with, spread it out over the salary schedule. We ended up with four percent per cell on the salary schedule. How would that be simple? So that's the basically, definitely.
So I think that's, then we are ready for discussion and action on. Approval of the base wage contract.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, pass the base wage contract.
Any further discussion? If not, all favor of passing of approving the, uh, motion to pass the base wage contract? All favor say aye.
So the next item for discussion and action is approval of the supplemental wage, uh, contract. The part where the pool of money that Jeff had just described for us gets allocated, uh. Among our, uh, teachers and our six point seven four percent of base wages turns into. A four percent raise when you put everything, all of the other compensation in, what you see across the. Uh, entire step and lane, uh, program is that four percent being allocated. Teachers, that's on the bar rate, Jeff?
Yep, and it allows our teachers, this, this proposal allows the teachers to move steps and lanes. We have the ability to say, no, you're staying right where you are, although most of them are already there, but, so we heard our, our. Newer staff more so than our veterans that. Or do something like that, but this proposal moves, moves everyone's step and we. Also has some minor increases to the curriculum pay, uh, and the professional development pay, and tutor pay.
Consider action on the supplemental wage contract. I move that we, uh, approve the supplemental wage contract as stated here.
Any further discussion? If not, uh, all in favor of approval of these supplemental wage contracts, say aye. Motion carries.
So the next item is our support staff contract, and we. Like to treat our employees, uh. All similarly when we're addressing wage adjustments year by year. What you'll see is a memorandum reflecting a four percent, uh, per selling increase. Support staff compensation, Jeff, is there anything else?
Just something to point out on this one, uh, these four percent across, there's again a salary or hourly rate schedule that we work off of. And in our tech support, we're proposing that we would exceed four percent by fifty cents an hour on each of those. It's a technical position to computer repairs that, um, it's a skill. And and it's just trying to keep us within market somewhat. And then the other thing would be in the custodial maintenance area, uh, rather than a full four percent on all of those cells, some of our. Uh, base cells, some of the cells in there were getting higher than market, so we pulled those back down. There's two cells in the schedule, three of them actually, that, uh, but a two percent increase rather than four percent, and then there's. Six or seven cells that we get three percent. There, some of the people that are gonna be impacted by that will still step up, so their increase is pretty. You know, it's it's good, it's it's above four percent with the step up neatly. Uh, there's one person that will end up with less than a four percent, um, unless we chose to do some grandfathering, but at some point, we talked about that. And at some point, he's gonna catch up anyway. Grandfather for one year, but the next year, he'll be right back to whatever is agreed upon, so he's gonna take that. Reduction, and it's, it's small, I think it was eighteen dollars per check. That's what I calculated it out to be. So, we're just trying to say, keep that within market.
So I think we're ready for, uh, action on the, uh, support staff.
A second. Is there any further discussion? If not, uh, all in favor of approving the support staff compensation proposal, say aye.
My favorite one is the, uh, proposal for, uh. Is the wage increase at the four percent rate for our administration, uh, and confidential support staff. My favorite because it's far and away the shortest. And I'm not even sure, I guess I'm gonna ask Jeff if there's anything you'd like to contribute here, but it doesn't seem like there are very many words on the page.
This one's pretty cut and dried, it's, it's an easy cut and glation, compared to some of the others.
So we consider action on four percent raise for all, uh, administration and confidential support staff, I think we can get a motion.
I I move, I so moved.
Any further discussion? If not, uh, all in favor of approving the compensation proposal for administration, say aye.
I I did promise to discuss the meeting and bridge that came up at the end of our union negotiation. There's been some suggestion, um, in writing with a, I thought, a very thoughtful proposal for. So availability of unpaid absences on a very occasional basis. Essentially accrue them over a period of years, and as you're through the right to take these non-paid days. And then perhaps a little bit of flexibility in managing your personal schedule. If you're inclined to do that, it is effectively, uh, net savings to the district, and then we take a. Teacher that is well compensated and, uh, don't pay them the time that they would be away, two, three days, and. Do pay a substitute who earns considerably less. We're not doing this as a financial, um, planning method, in fact, I'm gonna be surprised if you see a lot of use of this, but. Our teachers have asked us to give them some more flexibility to be away from the classroom where it is needed for. You know, personal mental health days and vacations are needed for things like family events. When that proposal was made in negotiations, the committee was prepared to act. Promptly, and it had been considered in our meeting previously in, in April. And so we had, we accepted the union's proposal and adopted a version of what had been suggested to us, and then. Included in the employee handbook that, uh, previously discussed. There's no further action needed on that, but I just, I want to praise the union again. Coming to the table with thoughtful ideas and an opportunity for us to, um, honor our limited budget. That's all I have.
I want to think the board are approving all those, now, we can, we don't have to do retro pay on the barriers, but. Be able to get them in place and everyone will be happy with July one increases.
Okay, uh, next up is Chair President.
All right, mine's nice and short. We're meeting next week, May sixteenth, that's six forty-five, so. We're seeing you guys.
And I'm sorry, could I jump back in the, May nineteenth for doing the. Meeting where we have invited members of the public to sit on a panel and. Look at teacher of the year and all the other good stuff. And so either I love your insight and thoughts on the people. Who are nominated and the ones that we see. I have always been spectacular. It's just one of my great heartwarming opportunities to hear both the good things that are happening in the classroom. So, May nineteenth, seven o'clock, you get to sleep in an extra fifteen minutes.
Oh, you're always called to be come early. Okay, thank you both. Chairperson, I'm here and there is. Moving on to other reports. Tonight we need to have the appointment of delegates to WASB and determine an alternate. I kind of did the WASB thing last year and. Nobody's storming the Bastille to take it away from. I would do it again. And I forget. Were you the delegate then or? And nobody would be happy to. Maybe with the delegate.
Everybody was asking.
Would you, would you be so kind as to accept the responsibility as alternate?
Sure.
From me last year.
Hey. Take on a delegate, maybe we decide to alternate and CISA. I know that Tim Obers had assumed that position last year. If I could just jump in, the. Truly the main, if not only absolute responsibility for that position is to attend the annual delegate convention. Which is Tuesday. So whoever, we have the paperwork, but it is just so you know, it's Tuesday. Okay, so whomever you volunteer elect probably should have that David for that.
So for that, I went last. So in that go essentially then talk amongst your. CISA one. Pool members and then out of those pool members, we collect then a delegate within there. And they go have a meeting whoever is elected that delegate will have a meeting.
And last year's.
Last.
Represented was Troy Anderson.
Was Troy Anderson. And so that is the purpose of that, that, that choosing. There is other opportunities to still participate. Individually based off of timing of meetings and discussions, I was seldom able. To participate with this work schedule and the coaching schedules. If there's interest to participate at another level, because I think there's opportunity for us to particularly learn. Offer us or even learn that maybe. We don't need to participate in an agency, so just kind of vote. Choose someone that has that ability to get to those meetings that would be. Plates and pack and.
And they're all pretty much helpful with that. So it's not a lot of trial.
Correct. And.
Well, is anyone capable of taking on the CISA one responsibilities? Do I need to assign this?
I cannot attend Tuesday.
Is it possible to have someone assume that role Laura and have a delegate be there Tuesday evening? I believe that's you're approving the delegate for that annual meeting. That's the only, I mean, now necessarily, right?
Tim could go to all the other meetings, right?
I struggled to get to most of those. Troy was my inside.
I move Kate as our delegate.
The electorate did not vote her into your. I'm not sure exactly how to proceed here.
I'll make a suggestion that if I can get two other board members willing to put their names on one of these cards. We will draw from those at least three cards and the lucky person gets to be the CISA delegate.
As long as you're not voted in as the delegate within that meeting, it's relatively short.
I'm going to be on the card. I'll be on it.
Okay, Dad.
So wait a minute, when he trusts they meant.
He's crying.
This accepts me for next year.
Asking us to send next year's meetings so that you could pencil something on that.
They provided Subway sandwiches last year.
Gerald, thank you very much.
No, I'll be good.
Okay, but we got your new business. Uh, discussion action on open enrollment attendance requests. And I'm wondering Jeff, if you might.
Let's see, so we're approving the applicants. Let's see, we have new applicants coming in. It would bring our totals to two hundred and ninety-eight students coming in. We approved all of them. There's eighty-one new ones, sixty-five freshmen, seven sophomores. Six juniors and twelve seniors that would like to come to Arrowhead. We do have the space. And I would entertain any questions. Was this adding the special act this year? Or is that in, I was trying to look at. There was some random. I believe there were five. We just had the one change over. One was a continuing student who's. Out of district, so kind of in that automatic qualifier.
Okay.
And then one feeder school student. And then the rest were from home.
And do we anticipate Adam Moore feeder school? Students or weren't we expecting more like five or six?
Some decided to go back to their own district. Anyways, I think everyone in our league that said they were going to come here and then then go back to their own home, so. But yeah, that's just the major. I just don't know how many are out there. In Adam, are they, are they all like ninth graders? Will be ninth graders next year or is it? No, one who's been a student here will be an eleventh grader probably next year. I believe the rest are ninth graders. Remember reading those correctly. I think we have one eleventh grader. But that way I know that that's probably the one.
We also have in the chart the students that are requesting to go out to the open enrollment out, which fortunately we usually. We always have bar paper students that look to leave our district than those that wish to come into Arrowhead. The board in committee, we talked about this. The board's question was how many of those students going out? Are going for online instruction because our, our suspicion was that a good number of them. And Kate was able to look at those applications to go out. It was thirty-two percent are looking for online school. Which we don't offer here at Arrowhead, so it's not necessarily like they're looking to leave us. They're looking for a specific form of instruction. The other thing I would.
What was the total overall? Where did I study the chart?
I don't, the virtual wasn't noted. I want to say it was twenty-six that were going through virtual.
I mean, I mean total, total not coming here. That's open and rolling out.
On page thirteen. Yeah, there's seventy-seven going out.
So the total going out is seventy-seven.
Twenty-five up for a couple.
For the new. New students. Going out.
I believe it's on page two where the items are, right?
And is that the trend nationally? Do you know Laura or. Online instruction, are we trending higher? That I don't know. I don't know that percentage.
Is there any like anecdotal or sense of sensibility for like? The students that are coming into Arrowhead, our majority of them coming in for academic reasons or, you know. Extracurricular reasons. Is there kind of any overarching?
We don't, when they apply, it's a state application and it doesn't ask that.
Okay.
Anecdotally, we hear all sorts of reasons. It's the academic piece. It's the, for particular sports, Arrowhead does break in. You name it and they come here for athletics. They come in some cases to. Be a different district. Things aren't going well there, whether it's academics or social issues for friends and want a fresh start. So that's lots of reasons. So in the agenda, we actually have written out a proposed. I guess proposed wording or. Approval only because we need to document in the minutes of this meeting exactly. That we're accepting these seats. So long as they don't include any students with expulsions, pending expulsions, truancy issues, et cetera. That way, when we review the applications, if there's a student that has been expelled, we decline. So we want those. At verbiage or so inclined.
So I move as I'm told to move under item A of new. I second.
Is there any further discussion on this?
I've got one question. I'm trying to figure out how to word it. The same, it's incoming, it just may go around expulsions. I'm kind to get us down a radical to another discussion. Curious if there's also anything to be, to understand. Disciplinary records about the students that we include, anything that we think would contribute to.
We, we don't have that. By state law, we can only decline, well, first of all, you determine how many number of seats. So if we said we have two seats, we can turn away three hundred people. If we have enough seats, the only way you can say, no, you're not welcome at Arrowhead are for those things known.
Those only things there.
Right. And so that's what we screen. Records, we're requesting records from other school districts to review. Or even phone conversations in advance. Don't even bother to send the records. It occurs pending expulsion.
Okay.
Okay, anything further? If not, we have a motion to. Approve open enrollment and attendance request with the following language. Provided students meet the criteria as outlined on state statute one one eight point five one, which includes no expulsions or pending expulsions. No conventional truancy issues, space availability is determined during the January eleventh, twenty twenty-three school meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item might seem odd because we're asking the board to certify the class of twenty twenty-three graduates. But you don't even know who they are. And quite frankly, we don't yet either because we assume all of the. Is our going, our seniors will graduate, but there are some that might not quite make it as they finish up courses. And they might take summer school to get there. So we don't have a list of here's the graduates you're approving because they're still in school. So what we ask you to do is to approve. Certify the graduates as determined by administration prior to graduation. So those are the students that we bring forward to you. And that way, when they walk across the stage. You've already pre-approved. We've determined these are students that have earned the right to be there. That makes sense?
I move that we certify the. Twenty twenty-three Arrowhead High School graduates as determined by administration prior to graduation on June third, twenty twenty-three.
Any further discussion around this?
I'd say as long as there's three choices on them.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor of approving the Arrowhead High School graduates as noted, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then last up is the selection of those school board members that are going to be participating in the commencement ceremony. So we've done a random draw in the past. If you want to do that, I have your nine names in here, but if any, so there's two things we've typically done. If anyone has, like Chris has children that will be graduating. If they, if they want to be present on the stage, then they're automatic or if you have a close relative, for instance. So those typically become. A sure thing. We have four spaces and then we do a random draw. If someone knows they're not available on June third and the rainy day to June four. You know, we can pull your name out too. Is that the way you want to do that again? Absolutely. We, we do, we do have another kind of very special family connection going on. Tim Langer has a niece that's graduating and apparently was there for.
Her sister's graduation and they ended up learning a very involved handshake. Since they're all working on making even more confident.
Okay, so Tim Langer is in for sure, correct? Yes, Chris is. Chris and Tim. Sure, so I'll pull those two names out. Is there anyone that knows they cannot be there? Okay, so Brandon's name would be out. Other, the others that don't have their name. Okay, so Brandon's name would be out. Other, the others that don't have their name drawn, you are absolutely invited and there are chairs that are over by the staff to be there and I'll recognize you by name on stage also. It's just there's only space for four people on stage to help with. To follow us, to be able to follow us. Everyone else is in?
Jeff, you're going to slip my name. Great. Thank you. And Daryl, here it is. Amy Hammer. Sorry, Daryl. That's all right. The next two years I need. Son and daughter there. I just want to ask you for the commencement. I know in the past, like some coincidentally, the state track.
Yes.
If some students don't get the, don't get to take part in the ceremony. Is there anything that we do for them at all for the ones that can't make it because of genetic or an athletic?
Traditionally, they've had their own, like we actually put pictures out on social media. So they, they come, some of the track meets participants, their events are earlier in the day and they make it back to graduation. There are some that come flying in just in time to have their names spread and others that don't make it back. Not only, but almost all to my knowledge do come and they take their pictures and they've got their track uniforms on with their gowns and, you know, running on the track. And so they are track coaches. I think some administration is still there. So they've got their, their routines. It's unfortunate and fortunate at the same time. We have incredibly talented athletes and we tend to go to state. And any day we were to choose for graduation lines up with something, lacrosse state, golf state, track state. It's just, it's hard to avoid.
Is that what it is like this year, the state track?
I think so.
I don't want to know.
Okay. Well, congratulations. The graduation's a great, great event. It's a super field with it. Please for the four that have been.
And others that they choose to.
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you. Any future agenda items?
I'd like to discuss the idea of, I don't know what committee would go on to, but putting the idea of making the robotics team a varsity sport on future agenda item. I don't know how that, how that, you would pursue that or if that's something you guys, if through administration would be directly with Brian.
Yeah, let me talk with Brian about that. I don't know that that's even something that would need board approval or board action. I don't know if there's a WYA process involved. If it's, it's not a WYA sport, obviously, it's a club. So I'll check with Brian about what kind of activities and athletics protocols or policies might we have in place? I don't believe there's any board policy related to that, that there might be something else internal. So let me look into that and then I can report back to the board. You know, what I hear, is that something that we bring into a committee? It is nothing that we can just do. If there's some incredibly valid reason why we don't and why, I, I don't know.
That sounds good.
For him, thank you. Welcome to that area.
I'd like to bring forth, whatever committee it's relevant for, just an agreement to our meeting technology. Hasn't issued that recently. But to be efficient, we should be able to, if we're at some pre-possibly in the different divisions. I don't know what that is and I don't know if maybe it was.
It's like five years. Did you be able to take that on?
Well, I'm sorry, certainly.
I don't know what else to put it.
No, that's good.
Thank you. Anything, anything other than those two items?
Well, just with regards to Brandon's suggestion, I think it'd be, it'd be hub us as a board or Daryl to, to reach out to Robert Angeli. He has a lot of knowledge in this area. That's what's been thrilling. So it could be a good resource to have it.
Okay, if not, we are pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.1. This school board will move into closed session.